Alright. Okay, Marcus? You get it ready? Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you, boys, appreciate it. Uh, before we get started tonight, I have a little something I need to read. Let me, this is just something I need, I asked Mr. Carroll to help me with, uh, so let me read this to you. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone to please hold, hold us, maintain a, help us maintain a respectful and orderly meeting. Let's keep any discussion and comments to minimum during the meeting since they can be distracting to presenters and board members. Any questions or comments should be made during the public comment section of the meeting. You can sign up to speak during the public comment before the meeting by seeing the town clerk. Members of the audience should not ask questions or com- make comments outside of the public comment area unless called upon by the mayor. Thank you. Okay, we have everybody here, Alan's on the phone. There, Alan?
How you doing?
Alright, alright.
I'm gonna let him read his statement.
I'm gonna get my stuff over here. Okay. Does anybody need the minutes of the last meeting read? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting?
I made a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, proclamation, recognition, and appointments, we don't have any?
None tonight.
And do we have any public comments tonight?
Uh, yes, one Jacob?
Yes, we do. Alright, you ready, boys? Alan, come on, you got some time, you made it. Marcus, Jay, come on. Alright, I want you to take this up to the orderman and the mayor, and I'll explain a little bit what this is.
What you got? Thank you.
It may be hard to read all the names, uh, we wanted to thank you guys for your continued support. We wouldn't have been able to done this without having access to the Farm Governor Scout hut. We started with eight scouts three years ago, now we have forty-four.
Oh, cool.
And it's not just from Drexel, we have twenty-five from Drexel, eleven from Valdez, eight from surrounding areas as far as Ray Chivers and Glenn, or George Hildiram. So, we are the only pack of little young men and women, uh, east of Morganton and Burke County. All the other packs have closed or folded out, so thank you.
Well, that's. Alright, guys, thank you, guys.
Just say how does mayor? Do it to me in one meeting anyway.
You want me to take your picture, you gotta walk in picture.
Of course.
I can't see the whole of it. Alright, you ready?
Yep.
One, two, three. Alright.
You want me to take a new picture, man?
Yeah, I'll take one. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great, that's awesome, you guys. Forward, forward, that's great, guys.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, unpaged pages, Drexel Industrial, signed up today.
So, we got a couple things to report today. I did, um, our Consulting Engineers Alliance provided us with two mockups, those aren't official plans or anything, they're just potential ideas for the heritage site. Um, lis- uh, over here to my, my left, uh, the audience is right. Um, those are potentials, obviously anything can change, but I thought those were a cool, at least mockup of the potential future for the site, so you can take a look at those after the meeting. And also, I did want to talk a little bit about a change order. So, the, as we begun digging on site, um, there were some complications as there often is when, when you're digging on a site that's not been dug ever. Uh, so we did run into some utility conflicts, um, and we did have to rectify those conflicts via a change order. Um, this would involve an additional, laying of additional sewer line, uh, to move it out of the way of a retention wall. Uh, the sewer line was in a different location, uh, on our GIS mapping compared to where it actually was, so that's what caused that conflict. Uh, similarly, a, um, water line, uh, needs to be, well, the bid I have in front of you includes a relocation of that water line. We have actually since getting this together as of, I think, Friday afternoon, we decided not to relocate the water line, but to instead cap each end of the water line and abandon the middle section that's in the construction area. Um, we could, we're, we're able to do this only because, um, that section there is only a loop connector, so it's not a direct feed for anybody, so nobody's water will be affected. Now, in the future, we do want to maintain that connection again, so, uh, our plan is after construction ends in that area, which is really in the area where they're having to build a bridge, um, to access the rear, rear portion of the property over the creek. Uh, once construction moves out of that area, then we can look at where the best location for reconnecting the water line is. So, the cost actually that, uh, we executed would include the sanitary sewer relocation option, which was eighty-three thousand dollar change, um, uh, option two, that is, uh, and then also, uh, like, I can additional ten or twelve thousand to cap those, those, that existing water main, so the rest of this you can disregard for now. Although, as we go into the future, we'll probably need to remake that connection, but we don't know exactly how much that's gonna cost yet. It's just a reality of construction when you start digging that sometimes you find, uh, find issues and complications. The, um, change order was consistent with the bidding package that was submitted by the firm, so there were no increases or anything, it's, uh, consistent with what was initially bid on the project. So, I just wanted to inform the board of that and, um, let you know that that, that had occurred so that the construction would not cease or pause, we wanted to make sure we didn't have an issue there. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
You said the unit crossings stayed the same?
Mm-hmm. Consistent with the initial, initial bidding documents.
Okay.
And this was also approved by our engineers.
And we went with option two here?
Yes. Which was the cheaper option.
Right.
Yeah, and, yeah, eventually, like I said, we'll want to reconnect that water line, um, because having a loop in the system there is good, just good for the system and for pressures and inconsistency and whatnot, um, but when we cap it, it won't affect any, any of our customers.
And something that, whenever we get something on a, on the site, we can hook back up on.
Yeah, either then or earlier, depending on funding.
Yeah.
Depending on how we feel about it, um, but Roger, our public works director, and I've been out to the field multiple times, kind of talked through this, and then the ultimate option we came up with, let's cap it for now, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, and if no questions on that, um, I did want to show, you've probably already checked it out, um, but we do have a video, new, uh, drone footage video that I will attempt to play for everyone. So that we can kind of take a quick look at progress on the site. Let me change my setting. Alright, I'm trying to be able to share this for the public, we'll see if that works or not, last time I did. I put music on this time so it wasn't like an awkward silence as we, as we watch. So, obviously, that's the front portion, then the area, the construction area that we're talking about, uh, is this area right here. They're putting in a bridge across the creek, so that's what, what's caused a lot of utility complications. What is it there? So, this video is uploaded on YouTube, on our, uh, YouTube page, so you can take a look at it and share with others as you are able, but I wanted to share it tonight. Um, other than that, construction continues, um, we're, you know, pushing forward, weather's been good the past month, so I tell that doesn't make a lot of progress, so, the, the hope is in the next week, at least that, what they've indicated to me, once this utility work's kind of wrapped up, hopefully they'll be able to move the front, front portion of the property, and we'll start seeing some progress up front. And that is all I have for.
That means you're done. So, I can actually, that you can, I know there's a lot, there's been a lot of question about this since we've done the, uh, historical sign the other day, why it's in, why it's where it's at instead of across the road at the site.
Sure, yeah, we have to. So, the initial plan with the historical marker, um, when we installed it, um, the initial plan was to put it on the, I guess it would be the, uh, west side of Main Street, um, but since there's so much concrete on that side, and also there's a concern that with industry coming in, that there could be trucks that hit it or something, you kind of want to put a marker sign somewhere, at least the state said, you want to put it somewhere where it's kind of out of the way, not going to get damaged or hit by vehicles. Um, so we opted to put it in the parking lot across the street, since it's right there at the property already, also that it maximizes its visibility, uh, on both sides, and as you stop on Oakland, uh, you can read it as well. Um, so I think at the end of the day, we, we decided based on the concrete that was in the area we thought of, the visibility and the potential construction and traffic that could affect the sign, it was better put in that parking lot, which I think turned out excellently, so.
Yes, it did. Okay, uh, community center banquet hall, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, our other ongoing project is the, uh, community center banquet hall, um, so I will pull up, or forward my, uh, PowerPoint if I can get my, my mouse over here. So, I took some pictures last week right before we had our events, um, so that you can kind of see, uh, there's a couple photos there, of course, that, that little chunk of square in the floor there, it used to be a wall, uh, that extended all the way back, so that's of course been removed. We have new acoustic panels in the room, a drop ceiling, a little nook over there that's gonna eventually hold some cabinetry, um, of course, you can see the lighting is far, far improved. Here's from another angle from the other side of the room, kind of showing how that room will be laid out. Uh, the presentation, uh, material would go on that far wall, um, based on this picture, which is the opposite wall it was initially, um, and then, of course, uh, local celebrities, Dan Hole and David Harmon, um, putting up a collage that we purchased as part of this project that has a lot of historical photos related to the property. Uh, I hope you had an opportunity to look at that if you came to, uh, a couple of our events last week. Uh, we'll be, be framing that and, and putting some sort of like cyclo glass material in front of it in the near future to make sure it's protected, um, I think it's like wallpaper material. So, they installed that for us, thanks to, to David and Dan for doing that. Um, and that kind of is just a few photos I wanted to show on progress, so it's moving quickly. Really, the only thing in the main banquet room I know that needs to be completed is the, uh, carpet, and then the bathroom's still being, still need the various things, so the bathrooms are kind of moving along a little slower, um, in the rest of the room, but hopefully wrapping up in the near future. Do we have any updates, David?
I talked to the contractors this morning, carpet is here, actually it's been here since last week, uh, but they wanted to wait till the festivities went through this week. Carpet's here, they won't wait for it to go in dead last, so that, you know, with all the dust and so forth, it's here. What they're real hold up is is waiting on toilet petitions, can't seem to get that as tight down, but, um, that, they're expecting any day now. Um, everything else is pretty close to done, uh, once that petitions go in, it wouldn't take them long. He anticipates being done before the end of the month at the latest. Um, if the petitions come quicker, we definitely get some of it, uh, that's, that's the only really hold up is those, the, uh.
Well, they have till November, right?
Yeah. I'm trying to push them up.
Yeah, yeah, we.
Well, I think, I think it started out nice and, and that, uh, everything's kind of come together, even when we got to use it a little bit this weekend.
Yeah, I know during the, uh, Burke County Chamber business deal that we had on Thursday and the mega reunion we had Saturday, there was, people were just impressed and had a lot of compliments about it, I'm sure, Dan, I'm sure you heard a lot about that too.
Sure.
Yeah, we've had a lot of, a lot of people, and my dad come through and said, "Man, you, you've really done something in here." He, he liked the idea of having that wall out and making it bigger, so, but, but they had a good job on that. Okay, uh, next, five C, NCD EQ water and sewer grants and loans.
Yeah, I'll take that one on mayor, so, uh, I included the, the write-up in your packets, but, um, uh, the summary of it is that the EQ, uh, well, the governor, actually, the governor announced, um, some investments in western North Carolina, uh, through the NCD EQ program, this, or, these are projects identified, um, to help improve water and sewer infrastructure in western North Carolina, specifically those areas impacted by Hurricane Helene, because as we found out during that event, um, our water and sewer systems aren't very resilient, so we needed to work on making them better. So, there was eighty-six million dollars total awarded, uh, two of our projects were funded, so that's a testament to our staff's bookkeeping, pictures taken, and our, uh, contract engineers who helped us with that application, that we were able to get two projects funded. One of the projects is the Drexel Morganton and Valdez interconnect project. Um, now, this project would require all parties involved to kind of move forward. Uh, our portion of it was completely funded at five million dollars. A little over eighty thousand of it was funded through a, uh, loan, 'cause they, they do a mix of grant and loan funding, uh, but the loan will be a twenty-year loan of eighty thousand dollars, zero interest, so it's, it's not mu- it's like twelve hundred bucks a year, it's nothing. And that would be the complete, our portion, which is a, a main connector from our water tanks at the top, um, off of, uh, Westwood, and then, um, all the way to a Valdez property that's kind of in the triple community area across seventy. Um, the specifics aren't, aren't that important, just that, uh, we had a, you know, rough, rough cost of five and somewhat million, or five point, like, one million dollars, and that was all funded. Now, uh, Valdez didn't receive any funding at, uh, for this project specifically, I think they received project for another, another pro- funding for another project, but they didn't receive any funding for this project specifically, so their portion of the interconnection can't be completed, obviously, without some sort of funding.
That five million's not gonna really help us, uh, unless they got their part of it.
Well, yeah.
It'd have to be all three of us being connected to the.
That's, that's the goal, 'cause ultimately, the, the property, my understanding is property's owned by Valdez, so they kind of are important. Uh, Morganton's, uh, portion got funded partially, mostly, um, so, with that said, that's just all that is to say that, yes, we received money, but as a, you know, getting to the point of spending it and getting a contract going is gonna take a little bit of, you know, looking at the projects and seeing what we can accomplish. Um, our engineers did approach me with an idea, uh, potentially applying for some more funding, uh, the town Drexel applying for some more funding to help a portion of the interconnection that we would own, uh, so we're working through that process right now. So, we're hoping the state will release some more, more funding. Um, I do encourage all of our local officials to talk to our representatives in the state legislature that are local, to encourage them to not put caps on these projects, um, because if you put a cap on five million, nowadays, five million doesn't get you a lot. So, um, if they could raise those caps and release more funding, um, to the state, uh, or to the municipalities in the state, that would be an excellent thing for our community. Uh, the other funding, uh, we applied for was for our pump station and some floodplain construction work to help improve that, since the, our pump station is, uh, one to often flood during high rain events. So, um, we received, uh, five point, or five million dollars for that as well, um, that, uh, we had like a total of a twelve million dollar budget for that project, so we're kind of taking a step back and seeing if we can just complete a portion of the project with the five million dollars, if the state would be okay with us completing a portion of it and not the whole twelve million dollar project, since obviously, we don't have the funding necessary to complete a twelve million, you know, pay for six million out of the twelve million dollar project. So, both projects, we received the funding, it's been announced we received the funding, I have not yet got the official documentation yet, once I do, I'll share that, um, but we're kind of taking a step back and, and seeing how everything shakes out with the funding before we move forward on construction.
I know when I, I approached Hugh Blackwell at the sign, historical sign thing, and he, he'd said it jokingly, and he, he looked at me and says, "Now, how much do you want?" But, yeah, that's, that's just something between me and you that.
Yeah.
We carry on, so.
Sure, we're, we're happy, we're of course happy to receive funding, it's great, the state is sending money this way, we just hope that there's the ability to get enough funding to make sure the projects are viable, right?
With Helene, stuff going on with Helene, it's gonna be hard to get stuff right now, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely, so that is, uh, that's just an update for you, no action necessary, just wanted to provide that.
Alright, the next is Community Hands Project, that's Mr. Hall.
Yeah, Mr., I would invite Mr. Dan Hole up to talk about, we've already talked about it, but talk a little bit more about it, um, as well here.
Well, I'm here this evening to, uh, I've spent, uh, about the extent of the money that I can spend, uh, on this project without getting a final approval from the board on actually doing it, and so, uh, I asked Mr. Carroll and Mr. Anthony to, uh, at the last meeting, as a matter of fact, I was here and I, uh, uh, as a result of that meeting, I sent you, all of you, uh, quite a bit of information. Uh, we have a site plan that David Harmon has put together, a landscape plan that Sohlmire Nursery has put together, a signage plan that Meadowwoods has put together, uh, this is a major project, uh, and, and I'm here just to make absolutely sure, uh, that I have approval, uh, to, to move forward with this project. Uh, it's a huge, uh, thing for me, it's an honor to, uh, to, to do this, and, uh, we're partnering with a lot of people, Meadowwoods, Sohlmire Nursery, and all those folks I just mentioned, Grow With Drexel, the town of Drexel will be a part of this as well. Uh, on the board, uh, and I'll ramble for a second, and then I'll stop, and you can ask any questions if you want. The, this is the site plan, uh, that Harmon Architecture put together, uh, these seven tributes to the working people of Drexel, North Carolina, would be put in the upper part of the park, uh, behind the pergola, uh, there'll be a walking trail, uh, there will be an individual sign created by, uh, it was designed by destinations by design, uh, and, and the signs will be actually created by Meadowwoods, a local industry, uh, and they will be separate from the art piece itself, the signage will be, uh, and it's on the upper side of the park, uh, and you can see about how that would go. Uh, I, I do want to mention that this is a major project, and, and I don't want to understate that, this is not just putting, uh, I've brought those art pieces here before, uh, you've seen them, uh, but we're talking about a lot of renovation to that upper area of the park to make it more, uh, uh, to do a lot for it, to co- to, it, it will be a calming place, it will be a nice place for people to walk, it'll be much more visible than it is now, it'll be much more usable than it is now. Uh, when I got the landscape design from Sohlmire Nursery today, uh, we started talking about the cost of that, and, uh, I realized, and, and I knew it ahead of time, but I realized this is not just seven pieces of art that are being put up, it's the transformation of a, of an entire area. So, anyway, that's the, uh, site plan, and Mr. Carroll, if you wanna, uh, and that's the, uh, landscape plan, and I know there's probably some written material that goes along with that, that explains all of that more, that on the upper left-hand side, uh, you will see what Sohlmire Nursery put together as a proposal, uh, and it will be, once we get approval, if we get approval, uh, we will scale it to the money we have, uh, and, and, and make it beautiful for the town of Drexel, but that's the, that's the landscape plan, and it's in your packet, I think. You Phil, I don't know if you have any other, anything else you want to?
No, I, I think, I asked Dan, the mayor, and I asked him to, to present this, um, we've had discussions about it, you've seen the mockups of the, what the monuments would look like, the stained glass, um, and the wooden, wooden architecture around it. Um, so, this plan, and we just, you know, this is this kind of rendering a site plan that is actionable and ready for construction. We just want to make sure the board is, is okay with the site plan, if they have any, any issue, any, any concerns, uh, anything that wants, they want to be changed, now would be, that would be the moment to, to make those, or to deny the project altogether, it's completely up to the board to make that decision, um, but we wanted to present it with mockups, so you had an idea of what you're, what you're looking at approving, and I will mention, it does include the Burke River Trail sign in the site plan at the front, which we've talked about a few times, and that's included as part of the project as well. Just want to make sure that's absolutely clear, so, and of course, the, the landscaping is, would be quite a large portion of the project.
Exactly.
Planting new trees, removing existing shrubbery and bushes, um, and in order to kind of beautify the area and make it, kind of make it fit meld with this art project.
It, it's very difficult to put an art project in that park with landscape that's been there for twenty-five years, that's not been maintained, it's been maintained, but there's all kinds of things that could be done, now you want it to be a total package that's really, really nice. Uh, and I'll also mention, we have raised, and I think most of you probably keep up with this, we've probably got about thirty-five individuals who've donated to this, we've raised almost ninety-two hundred dollars, uh, the private donor, uh, she's not such a private donor, I saw a magazine article today about her and the, and, and this whole project, uh, uh, she, she's willing to spend whatever it takes to make this a reality. She believes in Drexel, she believes in Grow With Drexel, the town of Drexel, and all the things that we've created over the last many, many, many years in Drexel, uh, and she's on board to do what it takes. So, this is a gift.
Any questions, guys? Have you anything?
Well, I've seen it, your artwork is absolutely beautiful.
Rock water feature?
Yeah, there is, and, and for landscape plan, she put a water feature in there, it may or may not stay, that would be probably the most expensive part of something like that, and it, uh, and she's very aware of that, she's very aware of the liability issues with that too, and so, she, she, when I asked her to get, to, 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 uh, put it all in, she put it all in.
I, I love that, I just, I worry about the upkeep.
Yeah.
And, and we will have to, we, the town, will all have to discuss that at some point, the upkeep of the whole thing, not just the water feature.
And Dan, you've mentioned to me, there is some of the funding that is being donated would be set aside for some future meetings.
Yes.
Not, not forever, obviously, but for a certain period of time.
Correct. And that would, and, and, and that has to be.
Well, thank you for that, and for, I mean, just, this is awesome.
It'll be great.
I'm a numbers guy, not really an art guy, I'll be truly honest with you, but, um, I think it's beautiful, and I think it's an awesome project, so I appreciate the effort and all the time you've spent into it.
Well, I'm an art guy, not a numbers guy. I'm an art guy, not a numbers guy. It went, it went fast. It went fast from a small project to a, it's a big project.
Yeah, I actually, I, I looked at this.
Salmire's gonna do all the landscape and stuff.
Well, that's, that's how it stands now. I mean, until we've gotten this final approval, it's, it's hard to know who's gonna do what, but, but yes, that's the plan. I wanted to keep it local.
Oh yeah, all local looking. Okay, thank you, Dan.
What David's got here, this is exactly what I had in my mind of that look.
That's a really awesome render, David.
Okay, do I have?
Yeah, if you could vote, just so we have proper approval on the site plan.
Do I have a motion to approve the Community of Hands project to go further, finish what they need to do?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, there you go, Dan. Thank you, David.
We'll, we'll schedule a pre-con of some sort, start figuring out, have a lineup of contractors in the near future.
Okay, where are we at? New bids. Okay. Approval of budget amendment number two.
Yes, I will, I will start that one, Mayor. So Chief Wilkie's here as well, I'll ask him to step forward too, so he can provide more context than I can. So he applied and received a fifty thousand dollar grant.
Yes.
For equipment related to hazard response.
Yeah, especially for storm related.
Storm related response activities. This is, I guess, a new grant that was, you know, because of the Hellen situation. So we did receive the funds, we received the check, and all I'm doing here is showing that in our revenues that we received the fifty thousand dollar check. And then also raising our anticipated expenditures to the level they need to be to afford the equipment in our budget. So that's really all this is, it's just a formality to make sure that that grant is properly allocated. I did also wanna mention that one of the pieces of equipment, two of them we already approved, they were smaller purchases, so we moved forward on those. But there is a drone that the chief had wanted to purchase, and it is a pricey drone. But I'm not familiar with purchased, you know, drones of this quality and standard, so I asked him to come and kinda talk a little bit about what the drone would be for, because it's as much as a vehicle, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is one, one of the top line drones out there. I mean, a lot of agencies are going to drones now, drone technology. It would be used for like storm assessment, hazard assessment, you know, large-scale fires and all that. The public works can use it, police can use it, I mean, we could take it to surrounding counties if they need it. And like, just like the hurricane, and I know the whole community was shut off at one time. I mean, it has the capability of dropping off up to five pounds of like medication or whatever to somebody that's cut off. And it, it's very useful. A year, I don't wanna say a year or two ago, I was working with the rescue squad and we had a, two individuals in the middle of winter had a domestic dispute. And one of them had actually jumped in the river, crossed the river, ran up in the woods and actually sat down to where we couldn't find him. And when we deployed that drone, we, we was getting ready to cancel that search. And we had, we decided to put it up in the air and deploy it, and I found him within five minutes. And if we wouldn't have found him, he would have froze to death before we come back the next day. So I mean, it's, it's a very useful, I know it's very expensive, but it's a, it's a whole bundle. Like, it comes with a drone and it comes with all the accessories necessary to maintain it and whatnot, and, but yeah, it's, it's very useful.
Jonathan, that has thermal energy?
It does have, yes.
That's why he was able to find?
Yeah, it does have thermal, thermal and night vision, that's why I was able to find him and not, yeah.
Okay. Who, I know, this probably, well, you or your assistant, assistant chief, just, there's just certain people that have.
You have, you do have to have a pilot's license to fly. I've already, I already have mine and I've got two other people going through, just getting ready to go through the process.
So the chief needed it or something?
Yeah, I would take it, yeah, if he could, I'll, yeah, I'll just take it out and if he needs it, I can fly it up, deploy it within five, ten minutes.
Yeah, drones are regulated under the FAA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, it's kinda interesting because recreational use, people can use drones for purposes. But for work-related and government-related, we have to have FAA, FAA.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, go ahead, Alan.
On this drone, I noticed it had one battery for sixty minutes. Is there not being money in that grant to get another battery?
Yeah, the batter, the batteries that are, there's actually four, I think I got, I think there's four extra batteries on there. I think it takes two at a time, so it's up to, yeah, I can fly it up to about one hour of flight for each battery cycle. So four batteries is like two cycles of batteries, so it's like in two hours, basically.
And then you could charge.
And I can charge it while, the other ones are in operation, yeah.
Okay, and another question. How long is the warranty and could we purchase extended warranty or insurance on it or possibility of some other application?
A warranty, I'm not sure.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
It does, but I'm not sure exactly, I think it's a year, maybe two, I think, possibility.
So we'll, Alan, we'll, we'll definitely follow up on that.
No, yeah, I can definitely.
And we'll, we'll make sure that we look at all those options before we make that purchase. I, I imagine with such a sophisticated piece of equipment, they have some sort of option for that. And we would ensure it too.
But I just wondered if it was, you know, like you said, an option, to maybe purchase something maybe longer, you know, that, that we could, in case something happens to it or maybe say if, you know, or falls off the truck or something like that.
Yeah, it'll be.
Or something or something.
Yeah, it'll be definitely secured in the pickup truck. Or like, that one of the pieces of equipment is gonna be a command storage unit, so we'll be able to have it in there. And it'll be, it'll be locked up, nobody will be able to get to it.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll make sure that, we'll put out our insurance as well when it's here, so that it's insured.
So it will be, it will be in the pickup and not the new truck?
Yeah, it'll be in the pickup truck, yeah, 'cause we're gonna turn that into a command unit. So it'll be, yeah, it'll be in the pickup truck, yeah.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
I do have one question, I don't know if it's you or Bill can answer it. And I was doing some math, and I am from Drexel, so I can guarantee that it's the right thing. But while I was looking at this, there's an extra four thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars that's, it's a difference.
In the amendment?
Yeah.
I think it's for some additional, or other grant, or taxing shipping was higher, I'm trying to remember.
That's a different.
I think we have a different thing, what's. Yeah, I think we, the, the grant does not cover the sales tax.
Okay.
Am I, am I correct about that?
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, I mean, it can cover, I mean.
It can, but I think the price came in at that.
Yeah, the, the price is, what I gave you in your letter is, that's tax and everything, that's the full quote of what it's.
I just know that it went from, you know, the, I added the fifty thousand of the total cost and it just come up about forty-five, forty-one hundred short, and I wasn't sure where that was or what, so that's the sales.
From taxes, yes, taxes.
Yeah, probably, and, and obviously, so.
And that'd be covered anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, anytime we do a budget amendment two, you know, sometimes things, sometimes things shake, and if we have any, any conflicts, we'll make sure to correct those. But I'm pretty sure I put, I plugged in the numbers from the cost that he sent to me and put them in there, so that should be, should cover it.
I just see the difference, I just, I just wanted to make sure what the extra was, I just wanna make sure it's covered.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for, thanks for pointing that out.
You guys have anything?
It's got thermal and night vision on it?
Yep, it will have the, it will have that capability, yes.
I think it's an asset, I mean, the father of an autistic child, you know, missing children for a lot. Plus that, you know, especially in night, if I'm quick.
Yeah, we've had two searches this year within the town, so, I mean, it, they've not been serious, but I mean, it's a possibility.
Right.
It's a very serious possibility.
They're having not need and not having need.
Yeah, I mean, it's an assessment.
It's an assessment.
Yeah, it's free grants, no matching funds needed, it's free money.
This package that we're looking at, this is what we're talking about, purchasing, so it's got four extra batteries?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they charge quickly too, I think I read?
Yeah.
I would assume so.
Yeah.
I assume at some point we'll have to replace them.
Yeah.
They've probably gone light, yeah, but expecting soon.
It's a pretty good sized drone.
It is. I've seen them up, I've seen them in person.
How big is it?
How big is that?
Is that like, it probably sits on your.
Small bars, size drone or what?
No, uh, I don't know, to be honest with you.
FAA regulated, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good size. Well, the landing pad is three and a half feet diameter, so it's, it's pretty sizable. When you draw that out, that's, that's something pretty big gonna land.
Every bit, yeah, but it's probably three and a half foot wingspan, I, when it's fully expanded, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, guys? No, I, I think it's great. I think it's a necessity. Alan, you got anything else?
No, that's all, I think you're doing great, purchasing that lot, police department's right now got them.
Okay. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the, the budget for the amendment, second amendment to purchase the drone for the fire form?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Departmental reports, financial report.
Yep, I'll take that on. So you got the, the pleasure of getting my full budget breakdown, I, I meant to do the summary, but I sent you everything. So you got some more detail this month, I hope you enjoyed that, that reading. So I'll, I'll kinda skip through, I'll try to tell you the page number, I'm on, so we're all on the same page here. But the first few pages are all revenue based on the general fund. So if you move down to page five, we had a total revenue, actual year-to-date, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand versus what was budgeted, four ninety-three, so we got two big property tax checks from the county. That, that explains why we made up some, some space there. Of course, that's mostly, most of the revenue is front-loaded because those in escrow, the bank's just write the check, you know, when they get them. So a lot of those have been written and sent, of course, those technically aren't due until the beginning of the year, January one. So that's our revenue, we'll skip down here through the various next, quite a few pages actually, which are all of our departments in the general fund, place fire, recreation, streets, fairgrounds, all of that. So we'll go down here to page twelve. So our actual total expense year-to-date, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand versus four hundred and ninety-three thousand budgeted, that's a variance of forty-five thousand. Again, that's due to upfront costs that we pay for every year that affect the budget. In that way, there's nothing out of the ordinary that we're seeing. Do remember that the R O Huffman banquet, banquet center costs are all gonna be front-loaded because the project was fully funded, you know, it splits it up through the whole year on our budget, but it's a front-loaded project that'll be completed probably before the, we'll pay for it before the end of the year's over. Just keep that in mind, so that number will probably be a little, little under of what was, or a little over what was budgeted for a while until we pass the beginning of the, the beginning of the year. Moving now to the electric fund, we'll go over to page number fourteen. These are again our revenues, so our total revenue, actual year-to-date, six hundred and eighteen thousand versus what was budgeted, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so forty thousand in the good there. In our administration, or well, move through the expenses there, to page number seventeen. Our total expenses year-to-date, actual, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, budgeted five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So most of that is due to that difference, about ninety-six thousand difference there is due to upfront costs again. We pay our compensation, or, you know, workforce compensation, insurance, liability insurance at the very beginning of the year. So it's a huge expense that encumbers the budget at the beginning of the year. And also our power purchased line item, which is what we pay when we pay our power bill to Electricity's. It's a little higher in the summer because of the, the summer rates and because of temperatures, the usage. So that is part of the reason why it's up, that will start to correct as we go through the year. Again, so nothing out of the ordinary that I'm noticing in the budget. Moving on to the Water and Sewer Fund, on page number eighteen, we've got the total revenue at the bottom there. We have year-to-date actual two hundred and thirty-two thousand versus budgeted two hundred and seventeen thousand, so we're fifteen thousand dollars in the good there for total revenue. Moving to the expenses on page twenty-one. Total expenses, actual, one hundred and ninety-four thousand versus two hundred and seventeen thousand budgeted, two, or twenty-two thousand dollars in the plus there. So Water and Sewer doing well again this year, which is good to hear. And I will mention that our audit is nearing completion, he's still working on it, but most of the grunt work has been completed, it's really just wrapping it all together. So hopefully by next month, we'll have a presentation for you. I will mention that the LGC, the Local Government Commission, extended this year the deadline for the audit. Years prior, it was due on October thirty-first, now it is due on December thirty-first, they extended the deadline to the end of the year. I have heard though that they, although they've extended the deadline, that means they're gonna be more strict on meeting the deadline, whereas in the past, they've been a little bit more lenient. And, actually, I think the tax report.
The, the new system for the, the water, no, it's electric, isn't it?
Yeah, electric.
That's, that turned, worked out really well, didn't it?
Yeah, I think everybody's.
A lot, well. I do have one, the parking lot, the, the money that we got, the community center we got for the parking, fair parking, where, what column, where would that be?
It'd be near the front, I'll find you the exact place. Alright, that would be.
That's a big plus this year that we.
Yeah, absolutely, and we've only got probably about seventy-five percent of the, well, maybe more than sixty percent of that because we have another event to spring. That is, if you look on page, page two, near the bottom, this is Drexel Fair Parking, this is Drexel Fair contribution, Drexel Fair Parking and R O Huffman Activities, it's the Drexel Fair Parking. So eight thou, oh no, ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Just for the, for the, for the.
That's just the fair. Correct.
Alright, awesome, 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 okay, alright, we have the tax.
Alright, let me get back to my page here. Alright, tax report. So we, twenty twenty-five, we said so far, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand net collected. That is sixty-four point six percent collected versus sixty-seven percent collected at this time last year. I will also mention that our twenty twenty-five levy at that top line is five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, which is quite an increase from our last year's levy of five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So our, our tax value went up a little bit, I'm not sure exactly where that's located at, but that's from the county, so that's, that's good. That means we have additional value through renovations, you know, upgrades to existing infrastructure and buildings. And new buildings, of course. Okay? That's all I have for finance.
Alright, we'll go through department, department, Chief Ritchie.
Yeah, Chief Ritchie.
I was a few minutes late today, we were on fire and rain today, till about ten o'clock tonight, running drills, in-service training, things like that, so I apologize. We had six hundred and forty-four calls for service or events, five reportable incidents, five cleared cases, four arrests, thirteen traffic citations, eighteen warning tickets, two motor vehicle accidents, and one other paper served.
How's, how's the golf cart thing going, is it slow, I mean, are there not that many or?
That many.
Not yet, soon.
And I don't know if we've sent out a notice.
We haven't done any public, public notices on it, we probably plan to do.
Be enough too, you know, if we do that, so.
I know we can't go into a lot of detail, but I see where there was a armed robbery, was that in town or was that somewhere else?
A mutual aid call.
Okay. That's fine.
And then we had a, let's see, there was another one I thought you may ask about. Gunshot or stab, that was a, that was a mutual aid call.
Which one?
To Valleys jurisdiction.
The shot, the gunshot.
Yeah, or gunshot. Yeah, and, and just sometimes they'll come, sometimes they'll, sometimes they'll come out as that nature and once you get on scene, somebody's been shot or stabbed, you know.
Yeah, that's a good point, Chief.
They're just trying to get you there quick.
Yeah, that's a good point, that when, when, when these reports, you know, in our, when dispatch takes a call, that doesn't always mean that when, when they show up, that's exactly what it was, it could have been something else.
And there's a charge for misuse of nine-one-one services too, so we evaluate it once we get there.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, Chief.
For the month of September, um, the total of members, it actually, by the time I sent this in, we actually had one resign due to, he, he was moving away from the district. So it's twenty-one members, actually. Our total was thirty-three calls for the month, which is on the, on, on the higher-end average. Uh, one of these structure fires was in the town limits. It was an outbuilding, so it wasn't a residential home. Dispatch arrival, eight minutes, forty-one seconds. It's, just, just due to distance. We're having to travel for mutual aid calls and stuff, that's it. But other than that, everything's going good with fire department, everything, everybody seems happy and no, no issues to.
Looks like your arrival time doing better.
Dispatch, yeah, yeah, it's getting there. It's getting there.
Alright, you guys have anything? Alright, thank you so much. Okay, uh, Mr. Treson. Welcome back.
Thank you. Alright, I also sent a copy of, uh, some potential new bylaws. And we may have to readjust our, our membership of our planning board based on population. And, uh, so that'd be something we can, you know, talk about next month. I wanna meet with the planning board one more time, you know, before we come up with a final, uh, final draft of that. And we also need ETJ board members that live in the planning jurisdiction of the town. They have to apply to the county, uh, and go through that process. So if you know people, you can make recommendations. And the county, in, in, in my experience, the county commissioners, well, before they appoint anybody, they'll always reach out probably to the mayor and the manager to make sure that this individual will be a good fit. So we need to, uh, to determine that.
Two spots.
I think it's three.
Three.
Three. And I'm checking, rechecking the population in the ETJ, cause now it's for, you know, it's proportionate was before, and now it's really proportional. So, um, and, and, and we have a big ETJ, and so it's probably pretty equal to what the city has. And so it might be, we might need another, I don't know, but I'm working on that. And, and as for, uh, planning staff report, um, a few minor subdivisions that have come through. Uh, we've met with the, uh, our subdivision review process for, uh, what, what we call the review officer. Will, uh, after the first of the year, will be done by the county. So when you submit the subdivision plat, you know, after, you know, January one, you're gonna have the twofold. We're asking for digital formats such as PDFs. And a lot of the surveyors have come aboard with that. And, uh, and then, you know, uh, I would review the subdivision plat, and Bill could do it too, if, if I'm not available, and make sure it's in compliance with our subdivision ordinance and our, our sending ordinance. And then, uh, once I, I send, submit my changes back to the surveyor, uh, they'll re-submit another draft, and then that, at the same time, they'll also submit a draft to the county, uh, and it will get, be under the planning department or community development department there. Alan Lyons will be over that. And they will have several review officers that will go through and make sure it's compliant with the general statute for surveying and plat, plat recordation. Currently, uh, the town manager and I are review officers for the town. And evidently, we still make mistakes, and, and that's why.
Well, I haven't, cause I've never signed one.
He's never signed one, so it's must be me. Uh, they never said who was making the mistakes, but they, they, they said, you know, planners are still missing a few things here and there. I'm good with this new process they're developing. It takes the, you know, I, I'll just do what I do.
I imagine the surveyors like it too, because they, if it's gonna get kicked, they, you know, it's going to the county, so.
Yeah.
They know exactly who to deal with and who will.
Well, I don't, I don't know if they hundred percent come on board, cause I kinda heard, hear some complaints now and then. Yeah, you better get that in, cause this is gonna change.
Oh, it's gonna get harder.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're kind of a little bit nervous about it. So, uh, I think it's gonna go better. It's gonna be a better process, you know. We'll be responsible for what Drexel has, and they'll be responsible for what the state requires and what the registered deeds requires. And we don't have to worry about that part anymore. And, uh, so hopefully all, all will be happy in, uh, in candy land, so we'll, we'll see.
I have another question about that. Is anything, will be, will be removed as review officers?
Yes, we will be removed at, at, at the December meeting in, for the county, so.
Fired.
We're fired, yeah. And, and I'm good with that. And, uh, cause I, and I will say this, our registered deeds has been very good with, with working with us. And, and I had to sign a few plats that I have never had to review before. They're called historical plats. And generally, that's when the surveyor has passed away. And, uh, and so the plat needed to be recorded, uh, just to kinda clean up some stuff. And, uh, and she's been really good about picking up the phone and calling and giving me the exact wording I need to do, you know, to make sure that plat can, can be, uh, recorded appropriately with the general statutes. I signed one, uh, just last week, or weekend, or two weeks ago. And so we're getting a duplex set of apartments just across the street. The gentleman who purchased, the company that purchased the, the larger set of apartments on Apartment Street are in the process of doing, you know, cosmetic remodeling on the inside, cause everything else seems pretty solid with, you know, electrical and plumbing and everything like that. So they're gonna be like updating the outside designs soon and fixing the parking area. And, uh, and they're linking, they have purchased that property just across the street, so they're gonna add another set of duplexes. And that, that was part of that original lot, so they sub-lot it off. Uh, they are also working with our code issue next door, uh, those duplexes that people have not paid rent in six years. I'm so lucky. So, uh, but, uh, he, uh, I think, I think they met with the property owner of that, uh, cause they're under current code enforcement. And, uh, and, um, so really, it's, it's no benefit, the benefit to them, it's costing them taxes and other things and violation notices now. And so they are meeting with them to do something with those properties. So hopefully, those properties will transfer, uh.
So you're talking about the lot in, right in front of Top of Hills where the new, new ones will be there, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'd be a small set of duplex.
Low income, or are they just regular?
No, no, it's regular, you know, yeah, someone, I doubt, nothing's really low-income anymore. No, no, it's, uh, it's a private, it's a private group, and, uh, and they'll be developing it.
How's the Burn Street deal going? Is it still?
Uh, it's still on board. Uh, I have a, uh, some reviews that need to be done and, and, and try and talk to them, you know, hopefully within the next week or so.
I was up at, towards Salem a couple of weeks ago, and I went by that, and they've still got some. I guess they're waiting on potential buyers or something, cause they got some.
Yeah.
And they might even build stuff on it.
I think it's five slabs. I actually went out there myself, uh, cause I was getting a little concerned about the Burn Street project. And, uh, and it, it is pretty much standstill there.
Yeah.
Uh, they still have, they, when I was out there, they, I think there was still like two units for sale. But, yeah, I think it was like built, you know, the manager and I were talking about it, and like two days later, we got like a email saying, hey, hey, guys, can y'all look at this?
It looked like they were, probably about six, they could have about six more units or something, some more. I don't, I don't know, maybe more than.
I think, I think it's more now. I think it's probably ten more, I'm gonna, it looked like, you know, about five slabs that I saw that are already, already ready to go. They just need someone to build. Uh, but, yeah, it was just like a couple of days later, you know, manager and I get an email saying, you know, we, you know, something about a sewer line easement, I think, through the property, so. But, uh, so no, they're still, they're still going. They're just, uh, in a, in a little bit of a slow pace. Uh, I do wanna reach out to Mr. Ramsey. Uh, he's supposed to be at tow and recovery. He is storing, you know.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Ramsey, Ramsey's out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is he getting slack again?
Yeah, well, he's probably been like that, and I apologize for not, not, uh, kinda stepping on him a little bit, but, um, but, yeah, he's, 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 he's building up vehicles again, so. And, and parking in the rideaway. And, uh, so I would like to, uh, go ahead and move forward with some, you know, investigate that, or at least reaching out to him. And, uh, cause he knows, he knows we're in business, you know, like last time. And so we'll, we'll see, we'll see what he does. Uh, we've had thirty-three permits so far. This is pretty good, you know, for a small town. And, uh, and I think I've got a couple more to do this week. And, uh, and I probably need to get up with the manager and talk about doing a floodplain permit for the big development out here. And, uh, and getting a cop, a co- I guess a copy of the sealed engineering, uh, plans, you know, for the bridge and anything in the floodplain, so I can at least have it on file and, uh, go ahead and issue like floodplain permit so that, um, so when we do get a floodplain audit, you know, all paperwork will be lined up and ready for that, so. And generally, you can get by with the sealed drawings from the engineer. And, uh, you don't, you don't always have to send it to the state. I'm always hesitant. Sometimes I will send it to the state and, uh, and it gets rejected, and then they have to go back and redo their numbers. But, you know, in this case, we'll just move, move forward with whatever the engineer agrees. And outside that, um, that's all I have.
Okay.
Any questions or anything?
Uh, nothing.
And, uh, and thank y'all for being so patient, you know, the last few months.
No problems, yeah. Lot to deal with, and we've been, and thinking about you in front of Ford Road, for all the things.
Yeah, so, yeah. Thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. That was what she referred to, that's the.
Okay, bylaws, oh, okay.
Potential updates.
Okay. Let's see, Mr. Kevin's not here tonight. You guys have his stuff at the back of the package you can look through. Everything looks like he's moving pretty well.
Yeah, he's always available for a call or question if anybody has.
Okay, uh, you want to do miss places?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. She, uh, they are at the, uh, they had to attend the, uh, homecoming parade in Ivan Valley.
Ground, everyone.
Yeah, uh, their teams had to, had to participate in that. But, uh, Zumba is Tuesday, Thursday nights, adult indoor soccer league Sundays, uh, October seventh, which is today, homecoming parade. Football and cheers at that. Uh, football season is in full swing. Um, October is cancer awareness, and the teams will be wearing, uh, pink for the entire month. Uh, I think it's breast cancer awareness, not just cancer awareness. Uh, the October twenty-fifth is a homecoming game. Uh, basketball science has started. New dimensions and, new dimensions and orders of day school, um, are going, are using the center, and volleyball, volleyball games have started. Birthday parties, other events are ongoing. Um, construction, construction's ongoing, as we discussed earlier. And we did wanna mention that, of course, hopefully everybody was able to attend, but we had a, uh, the reunion event on Saturday at the center, which was, I was able to attend, and I think it was a great event and a great use of the space. Um, it was great to see so many familiar faces and new ones, uh, who were, who were back in town. And, uh, also, we, um, had the Burke Chamber event before that on Thursday, um, where we didn't really know what to expect, but in my opinion, it was an awesome success. Um, seeing all the businesses and all the, all the folks that came and tried food, drink, and everything at that event. So wanted to report that those were, were quite successful, yeah.
Yeah, we had a busy weekend. Had Chamber on Thursday, the sign on Friday, and the reunion on Saturday.
Yes.
So it was a good, good busy weekend, but it was a good thing to have, so. And I think the business, the Chamber thing was really a big, big thing for us. It really helped us out as far as businesses being aware of what's going on and stuff here. The big crowd for the sign, right?
Yeah, it had an awesome crowd for the. Uh, in fact, the state, uh, the, the lady from the state, um, mentioned that of all the ones she's attended, it was the most well-attended one she'd seen, which is pretty, pretty good.
For the historical?
For the historical marker, yes.
Big, I thought it was a big crowd.
Yeah.
Okay, that Oliver.
That's all the departmental reports.
Mr. Wilcox, you have anything for us, huh?
It's always a good thing when I don't. I don't.
Alright, you manage your report.
Yeah, just some dates for the public and for the board. Um, there is a candidates forum, uh, that Grow with Drexel is, um, putting on. I think it's Grow with Drexel putting it on. Um, that is October fourteenth at six-thirty. It'll be in the new banquet room, my understanding. There'll be a good use of that space. Hopefully it's complete by then, but even if not, even if not, the, the space is usable.
That's a week from tonight, Mr. Harmon.
I need to do it.
There is another, we're gonna have another fall concert that is going to be on October eighteenth at six P M downtown in the park. So please come out. The band is Grandma's Medicine. So I, I think that'll be a fun rock concert for everybody to come out and attend, so please do. Uh, Grow with Drexel's having a meeting on October twenty-first at five-thirty. My understanding is this meeting, they're gonna talk about, I think, elections of their executive committee and some other factors in the future of the organization, so that'll be a good one to attend. Uh, I will be out of town, uh, to the managers conference, uh, on October twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, just to keep that under calendar. We'll have a Christmas tree lighting on December second. That's, uh, the night of the meeting, right after the meeting, around seven fifteen. Uh, we plan on, again, having the Drexel, uh, chorus coming out to sing some Christmas carols for us and lighting the Christmas tree. I think that was a really fun event last year, so we'll be doing that. And the Christmas parade in Maine, uh, Christmas on Maine event are scheduled for December thirteenth from ten A M to two P M. And we're still working on those, those plans, uh, over the coming months. And with that, that is all I have there.
Our meeting next month, November is on Monday, so Tuesday, because of the election, Monday, the third.
Did we, did we do that in the calendar?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll make sure.
I know what I have at, at home is.
You probably hit it right. I can't remember.
I'm pretty sure.
That might, that will be on Monday, November third, instead of Tuesday.
Thank you for mentioning that, yes. I'd forgotten about that.
Okay, and we have no closed session, Mr. Wilcox?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Uh, I would like to say a little something that, uh, we passed an ordinance, I think it was the last month we passed that, about setting times and stuff for our buildings or our, our.
Facilities.
Facilities. And, uh, there was, I, I don't know if it was a misunderstanding or what it was, but there was a thing on Facebook about, about it, about us being mean or being bad for homeless people, the three people we have. But it, it was not saying, we were not saying that we had to get rid of the homeless people in town. We're just setting time and stuff for restrictions that should have been done beforehand. Even though we did get a couple complaints here and there of such things, so, you know, we listen to our, to our constituents, and we, we take care of that problem as best we can. Uh, a majority of them were not even Drexel residents. There were a few that was. And, you know, disagree or agree, that's, that's your prerogative. That's, you know, we're, we as a board just wanna do what we feel is right for the town as far as what it is to be done. But, uh, you know, we're not being harsh on homeless people. We're just trying to protect what is ours and make sure it stays in good shape. Especially since when Mr. Paul and him get their stuff done up here, we will definitely need a lot to take care of that. So that's, I just, uh, I mean, I don't know if you wanna emphasize anything on that or not.
No, I would just, I would just say that, um, that ordinance, a lot of the language was borrowed from major cities like Charlotte and Greensboro, Winston-Salem, so I don't think anything in the ordinance, in, in my opinion, was out of the ordinary for what major cities would adopt. But, um, of course, it's ultimately up to the board to determine what rules are established on public facilities. And of course, everybody can have an opinion about that.
Okay. Uh, another thing, right, first, uh, there's a gentleman interviewed me probably right out of a year or so ago. His goal was to meet with all five hundred and twenty-some, fifty-some, what, five hundred and twenty-some mayors in this state of North Carolina. And I, last I talked to him, he hadn't already met for like.